Good evening. I'm calling the meeting of the open hearing regarding the FY26 budget to order. Roll call members. Nancy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep. Stephanie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jim? Art, yes. Okay. The chairperson hereby informs the committee and the audience members of the recording of this meeting. The chair announces to the audience, good evening, I'm Martha Bataki Jr., Chair of SBRSD School Committee, and I will be residing over this public meeting here today, excuse me, on March 17th, 2025. Once the public hearing has commenced, there can be no motions or votes until the hearing has officially concluded. The purpose of this public hearing is to invite comments from members of the public regarding the proposed FY26 budget that is pending before the school committee. The committee will hear comments from those present who wish to speak for, against, or neither, for nor against, the FY26 budget. Through the chair, committee members may ask questions of any person giving comments today. Please be mindful that all comments are public and available to all once they are presented. Persons providing any comments at the public hearing are advised that the hearing is being recorded for broadcast. If you wish to provide any comments, please state your name, residence, and organization you represent, if any, and sign in at the podium. Public comments will be heard in the following order. Anyone speaking in favor, anyone speaking in opposition, anyone speaking neither for nor against, school committee comments and questions. Let's go up.
Just gonna bring up the PowerPoint for us. So we have two documents that hold most of the information. We have the PowerPoint presentation that is in everybody's packet, and then there is a, what we like to refer to as the Budget Book, which is an informational booklet on the budget as well. All of those were posted out on the website. And there's copies here. Oh, there's my little... Oh dear. There we go. So I always like to start with our collaboratively designed vision. This has acted as our North Star over the last eight years in the district. We align our strategy for continuous improvement to this vision, and it really guides all the work and everything that we do in the district. As part of the budget, I always like to review the guiding principles for our work. We try very hard to build a budget that's reflective of the vision, as we talked about. It's based on our strategy for continuous improvement, or what people would refer to as a district improvement plan. We, of course, first and foremost, want to sustain the district's commitment to educational excellence. We really try very hard to develop an assessment that is manageable to our member towns. We try to provide effective programming and staffing levels that foster continuous improvement in the most cost-effective manner. We try to be, we clearly communicate everything that we do with all stakeholders. We try to allocate our resources as effectively and efficiently as possible, and so that we're aligned as a pre-K through 12 system. We try to be proactive, as opposed to being reactive, in everything that we do, and we always base our decisions on what's best for students. That's at the core of everything that we do. So I joke every year that there'll be a quiz on this if anybody can read this, but I just wanted to highlight that this is what we refer to as our strategy for continuous improvement. We tried to get this in front of the school committee very early in the year, and it was approved by our school committee, I want to say, in October. These are our expectations, our goals, our strategic plans, and then behind that, you'll find on the website are the action steps of how we are going to go about that work in this school year. So that is also out on the website for anybody to look at. So it's always important, I think, to highlight, especially in a regional school district, where we are in the state budget process, because a lot is riding on the estimates that we make right now. So this is my 18th year working in education and in a regional school district, and when I first started, probably the first couple of years, we would be all the way down to probably the conference committee budget by the time I was headed to town meeting or to this hearing in my former school district, so that we had a much better idea of where things stood in the state. And that has drastically changed even prior to COVID. So right now, we are building our budget based on what the governor has put out, and we need all those other steps to happen before we know what's actually going to be the case. This is our budget process. We actually start all the way back in October and start looking through where we were last year, and starting thinking about where we think we need to go, and meet together as an administrative team, as with our faculty and staff leaders who work on submitting budgets and requests. We meet with the finance subcommittee and as many stakeholders as we can to get input, and we include that with what comes from the state when we're making our decisions. Oops. What's happening here? Why does it hate me? I don't know, it would move. Okay. But this is where we actually are. So we are down at the budget hearings, so we've been working towards this process. And then we still have a very long way to go. After the, hopefully, the budget is adopted by the school committee Thursday evening, it will head to our member towns and will be up for consideration, and hopefully approved at their annual town meetings, beginning, I believe it's May 3rd this year in Monterey. Oops. You did a lot, you did a lot of clicking, too. Okay. So here's a quick snapshot of the overview. You can see our FY25 budget number was $19,781. Our FY26 preliminary budget number is $20,673,631, which is a dollar increase of $892,060 and a percentage increase of 4.51%. You can see that we broke it down by operating capital and debt as well. So we started by presenting, as part of our budget process, we start with the capital budget plan. This is both our technology and our buildings, grounds, requests. These are our proposed FY26 amounts. A little more of an overview about capital. Capital is what we refer to as costs or items costing at least $10,000 or more. Capital expenditures really are those that are funds that are either involved in acquiring, improving, or maintaining long-term assets, so they're depreciable. So usually, it has to do with our buildings, lands, infrastructure, and equipment. They involve a significant investment and have a useful life that is longer than a year. So our finance subcommittee recommended approximately $339,000 in capital improvements for next year, and this is, represents a 2.95% increase to capital expenditures. The focus is on upgrading flooring, sinks, countertops, asphalt work on all campuses, some ground improvements, equipment, safety and security, including technology, cameras, oil tank maintenance, athletic fields, and hopefully the start of a replacement on our mini buses that we use quite a bit. Next is our debt schedule. So this is the debt that we took out for our roof and boiler replacement. We are in year eight in paying down our debt, and you can see we'll have six years remaining after this year on that project. This is another visual representation. Thank goodness the arrow is going over to the right. So this is our foundation enrollment change per the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Interestingly, between FY25 and FY26, our foundation enrollment did not change in total at all, but it did shift between our five communities. So you can see the change in students based on the information at the state and the percentage change. So we're working with 626 in our foundation enrollment formula. So as I started with, you know, talking about what's in this budget, we strive to maintain our commitment to be effective and efficient with our resources and align those resources based on student needs while always keeping the assessments to the towns as manageable as possible. I don't need to go over again, the overall increase is proposed right now at 4.51%. Since 2017, our overall budget increases have been, on average, 2.78%. As of this year, when we add that number in, it went to 2.69% of an increase. So there's a lot of uncertainty and unknowns, and that's all we heard when we met with our legislative delegate as Berkshire County Superintendent's Roundtable. But the availability of our statewide grant funding has been down, and we expect it to be down or roughly about the same for us, just based on the projects that we're working on with the state and what we think we will be able to effectively receive next year. So we supplement our budget with both entitlement and competitive grant funding, and we think that we are going to be right around $1 million, which is where we were last year as well. We, this budget includes funding for ongoing professional development and external coaching for our math initiative, our ELA program, and structured literacy. We are going to continue with the implementation of our program design initiatives, such as expanding our internship and mentorship programs, our designated early college program initiative, which will probably move to more of an expansion this year. We're going to continue to expand and think about other pathways with our Innovation Pathway Program, and our Transcend Innovative School Redesign Initiative at the secondary level is also going to continue. Our hopes are that that might even expand into something at the elementary level at some point as well. Also, our United States of Readers Program, I was just informed that we've been doing at the elementary level, will be ongoing for next year at no cost, because we have been included in the state funding, and we're the only rural school district at this point that has been moving forward, so we're really excited about that. This budget includes continuation of our late buses for next fiscal year at this time. This budget also includes the continuation of the cost sharing of our physical therapist position with Berkshire Hills Regional School District, which we've been doing for at least, for quite a few years now. We have been talking about the significant increase in costs of energy, which is one of the reasons we pursued looking at our solar option, but over the last year, we've seen our costs in our pellets and our oil go up somewhere around 56%. So we've been really looking at whether or not we want to possibly convert our boilers to wood chips as a way to bring the cost down, but we're exploring whether or not, like what the conversion of costs would be, cost-benefit analysis moving forward. We budgeted along the same lines right now. Our solar array just got activated later in the spring than we thought, so we're estimating on the low end, or what the company suggested that we would see as a reduction in our electrical expenses of 40%. They said 40 to 50, but we've stayed on the low end with our estimates until we actually see it in action. We started last year with contracting out our evening custodial services. That was an estimated savings of around $100,000, and we're planning to continue this arrangement with next year's budget. So early childhood programs, we continue to look at how our early childhood programming evolves across the district, and we do this with an eye on considerations of our early intervention referrals and needs. So we are still working with, our best practices is identified by DESI, and our early education and care at the state, EEC, for pre-K through grades three. We're still working on preventative, preventive early literacy and early numeracy instruction in both pre-K and kindergarten levels. We have our early childhood program registration and screening process have both for pre-K and for kindergarten, and we administer these, the mandated dyslexia screening for all students, kindergarten through second grade. We try to do this process in June so that we can make informed decisions about what our needs are in our early childhood placements. Okay, so here's some nuts and bolts information that we know so far. Our Chapter 70 is $2.196 million for the 626 students. This year, it is proposed that there, it's $104 per student, which is an increase of just over $93,000 over our 2025 Chapter 70 amount. Chapter 70 is the amount that the state feels it costs to educate a student in the state of Massachusetts. Our regional transportation reimbursement rate is estimated at $1.5 million or 95% of our total eligible costs. So those are our regular education, transportation costs, or 95, so, which is estimated an increase of $312,000. The town assessments, as a result of this proposal, are slated to increase at, by $337,000 in total, or 2.16% overall. So our tuition, other than school choice, which is basically our students who join us from Mount Washington, are decreasing just from the number of students attending the district from 180,000 to 104,000 for next year. And our Medicaid reimbursement revenue, we're not projecting much of a change, and it's holding right around the 70,000 mark. So I also want to thank, I know Julie Hanem, who is here now as a school committee member, but last year was a finance committee member, and Tara White, who is joining us from the audience, did work with me last year on how best to improve and make our budget presentations as clear as possible. And one of the things we talked about is making sure that we understand these revolving and reserve accounts and how they're used and could be used in the school district. So school choice is a revolving account, which houses both the choice in revenues and the choice out expenditures. This year, we are proposing, if needed, that we could charge $980,000 of our expenditures to the school choice fund. Luckily, we haven't needed to do that in the years, which is why you'll see what's happening with our excess and deficiency fund next. But in the event that we do need to charge expenditures over there for unforeseen changes or revenues that we might not get from the state, or don't get in a timely fashion, which we can talk about a little later, we have these funds available to use. We are estimating that we would have approximately, if we had to use all of that, we'd have approximately $400,000 left in school choice, and again, this is if we need it. Our excess and deficiency fund is a reserve account. This is when either your revenues are higher than projected, or your expenditures are less than projected. It represents the same thing as free cash would represent in a town. So this, we just got our, our certification came in Friday around noon. We are certified at $1,009,000 and change. It is estimated to be just over $20,000 over the 5% maximum level, which means that we will be returning that $20,000 back to the member towns, based on the formula. We are proposing the use of $800,000 of excess and deficiency funds as a way to help suppress operating assessments to the member towns. And the reason for this is just what we're doing right now. We really don't know where our revenues and our expenditures are going to be at this point, and so in the event that we do better than expected, we certify those monies and we return them back to the communities for, to keep the assessments down. That is the goal. Too old to read that from afar, so I need to post. The inflation rate, as of January, was 3.9% in Massachusetts. As of February, our inflation rate in the United States was 3%, which was based on the Consumer Price Index. The Chapter 70 funding formula has a cap of 4.5%. However, the inflation rate being used at the time was 1.91. I just read something today that said they are using 1.35% in the funding formula. So it's a moving target and not moving in a direction that, that is optimal for districts. Our transportation contract. We are in year three of our three-year contract. We have gone out to bid, and it was, our bid was opened on Monday, March 10th. We received one bid, it was non-responsive, so the district will be rejecting and rebidding the services very shortly. Our health insurance plans have seen an increase of 16% this year. We participate in the Berkshire Health Group, Joint Purchase Group. The district pays 80% of most of our plans, and this is an increase to the district of just over $477,000. We're currently in contract negotiations with all of our bargaining units, so we have, we're hoping to have a contract in place for the beginning of the FY26 year. So this brings us to our proposed assessments. You can see here how the change in assessments per town, based on all the factors we just talked about, the overall increase in total is $337,403, and the change in assessment is reflected for each community based on that. So, and then below it, we put the breakdown by operating transportation capital by town Each year, I like to just review what we are investing in, and we've talked a lot about it in, throughout the presentation, but we really just want to continue to work on expanding our innovation, our innovative educational experiences. We want to invest in our faculty and staff, district sustainability, and our students, with the hopes that they will reinvest in our communities and our local economy. We are investing in after-school programming, clubs, activities, homework and intervention center, and late buses. We are investing in in-district inclusive programming for students. We are investing in our early childhood programming based on our district's needs. We are investing in social emotional skills and supports for our school community, and we are investing in our students' success, and based on what their interests are and their needs, their choice and their voice. So I am happy to take any questions, or which way do you want to do this, Mr. Chair? If you would like to start.
Take questions from the audience? Come up to the mic and introduce yourself, please, and you have to sign this, sign sheet.
Is there a sheet up there?
Is there a sheet up there? Okay.
Don't worry about adjusting the mics. Do you want me to hear it there? Right front of the mic, or just anywhere by it.
And just a couple of quick questions. I'd like to know, because this is something that I read about recently in the news with Berkshire Regional Hills, was the difference between how much we receive, like for example, from Mount Washington per student compared to what our costs are per student? And with the article I read, was it that they were talking about increasing, the towns that choice into them, they were talking about increasing the tuitions at the end of their contracts? So I guess, so it's a two-part question. One is, what is the, how much is the difference between what it costs us per student for our towns that belong to Southern Berkshire Regional School District, and how much tuition do we collect per student? And then the, the second question is, is the agreement that we have with Mount Washington, or any school district that would choice in, is that, is that in perpetuity, or does it come to a point where it ends, and then you renegotiate what the per-student cost would be?
I, I would have to look, unless, I think, our business mark, mark is, it's $22,000 per student that we have currently with Mount Washington. Our cost is higher than that, and I don't know exactly what it is on the website, but it's probably, I'm going to guess, if I had to guess off, about a $6,000 difference. And I just want to know, what I don't know is how often the agreement is reviewed, so...
Right. So, so when we take choice in children's...
Tuition in or choice in?
I'm sorry?
Tuition in or choice in? I just want to make sure I answer the question appropriately.
But when we have children who choice in?
Okay.
And in this case, we're, we charge Mount Washington about $22,000 per student. Do we also receive the per-student amount, like we do for our kids, from, was it Chapter 90 funding or something? The person, what we get from the state per student? The person, what we get from the state per student?
So, it's very different, choice versus tuition, right? So, with choice, everybody gets $5,000, and if they have special needs, they get a special needs increment that comes with a student. That's School Choice and that's state. Tuition is something we can negotiate on our own.
I see. So, would you...
And there are increments associated with that.
Would you say that the amount of aid that we get per student from an outside community like Mount Washington is approximately the same as the aid we get per student in our own district?
No. Well, they're different. I mean, I think the tuition amount is much closer to what the actual cost of, of educating a student is.
If I remember correctly what I read about Berkshire Regional Hills, there was a much bigger difference than $6,000 per student.
Right. I don't know what they're, how they negotiated their tuition agreements.
Right. And, and I, and I think it's only fair that an outside community who does choice in, especially one who doesn't have a high school, or a junior high school and high school, you know, that it's only fair that they do pay per student about what our towns pay per student. So, I'm really glad to hear that, from what I can tell, it's substantially less of a difference than what Berkshire Hills is. And I guess when it comes time to renegotiate that contract, you all take another look at it and see.
Right.
Thank you so much for your time. This is a fabulous job and very easy to follow.
Oh, good.
It's taken me a couple of years.
That's okay. It's taken us a long time.
Tara White, New Marlboro. I have a comment, and then I have a couple of questions. So, I understand that this has been a really tough year, considering you have all four contracts up, and that you don't have those figures to work with yet. I get that. I understand that. But, I'm a little disappointed in the whole work of the Finance Committee getting to this budget. I'm not quite sure how that was done, or how much work was put in it. Because when I look back at the Finance Committee meetings and agendas, they only met basically three times. The first time was for tech and capital. The second time was for budget presentations by departments, and the third time was the preliminary proposal, which I was at. That was the March 6th. And I am a little concerned on how this came together when the Finance Committee didn't have more meetings. Normally, there's at least a minimum of four, five, maybe six meetings, and I'm not quite sure how this came together. Having said that, you've got a budget, you're presenting it, that's what it is. So, the first thing I'd like to know is, on the transportation contract, you said it was non-responsive. What does non-responsive mean?
Sure. So, it can mean a variety of things, but...
But what did it mean?
I'm going to tell you.
Okay.
So, what it means is that we put out a bid with very specific terms. If they don't meet any of those terms, then it is a non-responsive bid. So, for instance, the bid came in for less years than we put it out for. The bid came in with transporting roughly half of the students in the routes. They chose to not bid athletics, specialized transportation in some cases, different routes. So, we could, late buses. So, actually, I think they did bid the late buses. But, the point is that they didn't bid all the routes, you know, that we need to service all the students in the district. So, therefore, we will have to reject the bid and go out to bid and see if we can get it again.
So, the bid itself encompasses all aspects, not just the transportation of the students to school and back. So, you're saying like late bus, other outside activities? Is there, do I understand, or maybe I'm, you can correct me, that there's also choice transportation?
No.
Okay. There is not?
There is, we have routes in this district that go to the edge of the community, or we have like an activity bus that we have had in this district, that comes from New Marlboro over here, and then that, that bus takes students to four different locations out past, it goes to Bay Y, Berkshire South, I can't remember. There's four stops that it makes out into Great Barrington. We've done that for years because it was something that the community, for parents who are working or needed, you know, it made it easier for parents to pick up their students after work. So, we've done that. Our transportation contractor likes to call one of our bus routes a choice bus. Students who are School Choice, if they can be driven to the edge of our district, can get on a bus if there's available seats. It is not a School Choice bus. It's part of our routes in the district.
So, considering the fact that we're only paid $5,000 for these choice children coming in, which is just ridiculous, absolutely insane by the state to continue with a $5,000, the transportation then for these children is not being subsidized, and in fact, the towns, the towns are, those children are being counted in as being trans, as part of the amount that the towns are being assessed for transportation.
We are going to have that bus anyway, is what I'm saying. So, it's just like the classroom, right? We're not adding a bus to pick up choice students. We have that as part of the routes that we need in our district, and there is space on the bus so the student can get on, just like there's space in the classroom. I didn't hire a teacher to...
Right. I get that.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily agree with that thought process, but I understand the process. What happens if the grant funding, as listed on page 15, doesn't come in? The grant funding that you're expecting?
That's probably when we would, we have to go to School Choice, or something that we have to pay.
You'd add in that.
That's right.
Okay. And what's happening with the early college, now that Simon's Rock will no longer be available?
So, we are still working with the state. Nothing's happening. We are still allowed, there's a, there's a, I forget what they call it. They call it a, some kind of period that they call it, where they run out before they move out of state. But, Simon's Rock will still be a partner with us, no matter what, because they do the early college certification of our faculty and staff members. The only change, they can still do what they do, they can still certify credits, students don't lose anything, but obviously, they'll be in New York, so they can't get Massachusetts' money to, for their per-credit reimbursement on their piece. We have been speaking with the state, and the state is going to allow us to redesignate with an additional partner, which was part of the plan that we had always had. We were going to have more than one partner, based on wanting to be able to offer different types of coursework for our students. So, that's what, we'll go back in, almost as if we were going through the redesignation process, which also comes with funding, to build that partnership. So, it'll continue as it is, and we will also add another partner.
Okay. And, and the last question I have is, when did the Finance Committee vote to present this budget forward to the school as a final budget?
They will either today, or they will confirm it.
But the subcommittee never voted.
Right. The subcommittee never voted to present, to forward this. Usually, that's a vote at the subcommittee level, where they, you know, where they say, yes, we agree, no, we don't agree. It's, it's similar in the towns. You have the Select Board, and you have the Finance Committee. And this, either we can agree, we don't necessarily maybe agree on every item, but may agree on every item, but the Finance Committee, as a separate entity, says yea or nay to the budget, to put it forward to the Select Board, to put it on the warrant for the annual town meeting. That's kind of what I'm asking.
The subcommittee did not do a, as far as I'm aware, did do a formal recommendation, but I didn't receive any feedback from the subcommittee to make any additional changes to this, so we can do it in this forum.
We never had the opportunity to have the conversation, to even say yea or nay.
You can speak when asked.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Hi, Sarah Sickett. I live in Sheffield. I have a fifth grader and an eighth grader. I have a question about our transparency process. I was able to pull up Berkshire Hills line-by-line budget. It's 459 pages, so I didn't print it for anyone, but I'm wondering where I find a similar thing for our school? It's by principal, or by school, or by department? I can tell you, for example, that Sharon Harrison has $1,500 to travel to conferences, she's the business administrator, where Kate Burtle has $2,500, and Peter Dillon has $2,000 in travel. I can look up everyone's budget by line item. I can tell who's being paid out of what grant and how much. So, this, as a taxpayer, parent, everyone, is so helpful. Everything is right here, and at the end, there's a plus or minus accounting with the changes from last year. I'm, in terms of transparency, when we're voting on a budget, like, a PowerPoint is great, but I'm wondering how we, as taxpayers, get access to this line-by-line, and where it's available for our school? I can find Grey Lockes on their website as well, just in a cursory.
We can run a budget report, line-by-line. This is the process that we've done, and no one has ever had any issue. We've given a line-by-line expenditure. I will say, because I have heard about, there are things built into this budget right now, including contract negotiations, that we are not going to put out there right now, because we're not going to compromise where that is in the budget. So, it's the same with transportation. We're not going to estimate what we have.
So, there'll be a chunk of money, if I'm understanding you correctly, that would go towards salaries? I mean, you're going to have to, I understand that you're in contract negotiations, but you'll have to budget a chunk of money, in theory, for salaries, or a chunk of money, in theory, for transportation. But I can tell you, for example, on page 227, that their attorney has $20,000, and their graduation costs $13,000, and the elementary school has $8,000 in supplies budgeted. I think all of that, we could have, and I can tell you how much they have shared for PD, for everyone in the building, and travel. I think all of those things, virtual high school is going to cost them $6,555.
We have all that. We have all that.
Okay.
When we do the expenditure reports, they're all out there.
I, I can't find them on our, on our website for any past years either, I guess is what...
They're there every year, in the same, in the same line with the expenditures.
In a line item budget like this?
I don't do the budget, we don't do the budget like that, but that's okay. I mean, that's how they chose to do their budget, but we can still run a budget by expenditure, and that's easy enough to do.
In years past, under Dave Hastings, as a union officer and as a teacher, I used to receive one in a binder. It was that grade eight and a half by 11, and we had to fold it over, but we could look. I just think as a taxpayer, it would really help me with transparency, especially with early college, and I know that there are grants and other things, knowing who's being paid out of where, for how much. I think it would help all of us also plan for the future, how long are these funds available, and where it all comes from. That would be my suggestion. I think more transparency is always better.
I'm wondering if it was put in the budget. Okay. Thank you for allowing me a second question. I really appreciate it. So, one of the big issues that we're having in our town is getting volunteers for our EMTs. And I know that our school system has had very good programs in the past in creating either a period during the day, and I, and I think there was some talk of maybe that being too short of a period, and maybe making it after-school activity? And I know that it was discussed in some of the meetings that I attended this year for the Finance Committee and the School Board. So, my question is, is, in, in the budget and in the programming, will the, I think it was CPR and first aid, I don't think it was an EMT training, but you need to do that before you go on to EMT training? Because we are very interested in giving, well, all the students, but particularly the ones that live in our town, to kind of give them a path towards volunteering for first responders and EMT. And I know that there's a great interest in our town, because once someone comes out of high school with that path, or even a senior high school who turns 18, who wants to do that kind of volunteer work, we have reimbursement programs to send them for EMT certification. So, I know that there was some talk during the budget, during the meetings this, the past couple of months, whether or not that was going to be included, again, in this year's programming.
We don't anticipate that it won't be. Where it will go and, and what time it will happen is, is open to, you know, who's available and, and what our schedule looks like, but we're committed to whatever, supporting students, and what students would be interested in, as well as the community.
Yeah. The only thing I want to add is, if there's anything that the school administration and staff could do to encourage our kids to take those classes, because we're on the other side of that coin, where we're trying to, you know, get more recruits in, and we're even looking at increasing the stipends for people who are EMTs in our town to stay overnight, and, you know, from like 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, where they don't go out, they don't leave their house, they don't drink, or anything like that, because they're ready to be on call. And then, of course, there's another stipend if there is a call. But, but we are looking to have to increase that stipend in order to encourage more people to sign up for that. And, right now, we're looking at something in the $100 range. We're looking at increasing it possibly from 50 to 100. And $100 for a night, for an 18, or 19, or 20-year-old, you know, it's a good babysitting job, let's put it that way. So, yeah, if, if, if you can continue the program, and maybe even, for lack of a better word, market it a little bit, because our towns, and I think, I think I could speak for other towns in the area, we are really looking towards our young people to take that volunteer path, because we're in great need of it. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else in the community, online or here? Chris, do you see anybody? Okay. Thank you. School committee members. Kim?
So, just for my own clarification, between choice and tuition students, I think it was 22,4 or something for Mount Washington students. And although it, sorry, I have throat issues, health issues, we'll go there. One of the major reasons also, well, basically, a tuition just buys you a seat at the school and gives you programming. One of the things we don't, I believe, provide to Mount Washington is transportation, correct?
I do believe that's true.
There's no extra bus run.
Which probably accounts for the slightly less...
Like, slightly less amount of money. So, secondly, choice students taking our bus out of our borders, we're not charged, we're charged per route, correct? Not per student?
Correct.
So, the bus is there, it's not an additional cost to any town for the choice students to ride on those buses.
Correct.
It's not something we also could dictate, because we have to take, which we limit very well, choice students, because the state requires us to have school choice. But I think that's about it for choice and tuition and stuff like that. The line-by-line thing, I mean, how in-depth do we go? Do we go, like, say, somebody takes, one of the teacher takes a weekend course and gets reimbursement, is that supposed to go in a line? I mean, where do we start? Where do we go? You know, you're asking which gets paid by grants, which, you know, I'm confused about. I, I see the budget. I see the budget, and I see it all broke down, but, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of... all broke down. But, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of confused about how far down they're expecting it to be broke down. That's what my question is. Is it by departments? Is it by...
Can run it a variety of ways.
Yeah. So, I guess what are we looking for? Yes.
Don't you have a line-by-line?
We have a line-by-line, but how line-by-line?
I mean, when I, if I would take out supplies, right?
Right.
I have to put down line-by-line for the math department's supplies when we're ordering them, right? You're traveling to a conference. We should know how much superintendent versus the sped director versus who is spending on traveling to where. And we should be able to know who's being paid out of what account. They list all of their faculty and staff at the beginning. Now, I'm not saying that they're, you know, actually, my salary is listed in the Sheffield Town Meeting Report. You can figure out how much I make. I'm a public employee. It's listed there, so there's no, there's no secret. But we should be able to look at our budget and know who's getting how much out of what place and how much we're budgeting for things as taxpayers. If we're budgeting $30,000 for someone to attend travel, that might be out of whack. If we're spending $400,000 on clubs or whatever, that might be out of whack. If a teacher was going on a conference, we as a school would budgeted, say, I don't know, $10,000 for all of our professional development. So, that would come out of that line item. I would say we're looking at a line item budget, not an individual by individual.
Well, that's why I was asking.
You'd look at your line item budget account. Same thing if any of you set the pleasure of doing that in a college union or another school. I'm just looking at the account number. And I can send you the link to Berkshire Hills as an example.
Oh, no, I've seen them.
Okay. So, I'm looking for something like that. Or the one, like I said, you can go out of the North County and there's others. But we should be able to see how much is being budgeted for each activity, in my opinion.
And they did.
Julie?
I can just say, you know, take school committee hat off, sitting as either a former Select Board or Finance Committee, probably six, seven years ago, eight years ago, I don't know, it was different school committee people that were finance chairs. And we'd come and we would get the, the big spreadsheets of paper this long that was this thick. And we were able to do that. And we rolled up our sleeves and we went through all the lines and had explanations of what everything was. And the fact that the Finance Committee did only meet three times, I, as a Finance Committee member, I do find to be unacceptable. I don't think that that's okay for the future. I mean, we are where we are now and we need to have a school budget. I recognize that in the best interest of the district. But the process that we had this year, I really don't think was okay. You know, even just three years ago, there was probably six or eight Finance Committee meetings and I think four last year and four the year before, that folks, you know, you can look up. It's on the web. You can, you can find out from year to year what they're doing. And, and I always wondered, well, when does the Finance Committee vote on this? And it, we don't. It comes to the full school committee. That doesn't feel quite right to me, but being new, I don't know the protocols. I don't know that. So, I'm making observations here.
Okay. Thank you.
Art, may I speak?
Yep.
I wanna applaud, Beth, there's a lot of work that goes into this and this is certainly an extra challenging year and I wanna recognize that. And I hope you guys can hear me because, like Kim, I'm also having some voice problems, so bear with me. I also would like to echo Julie's sentiment as a new member of the Finance Committee and actually very new to school committee and not having a lot of knowledge about how things are done. And I've been doing a lot of listening, absorbing and trying to learn and get up to speed really quickly. Finance Committee wasn't necessarily something that I, I thought I'd find myself on, but I thought I've got enough experience with budgeting in the corporate world that how hard could it be? And I've learned that it's extremely hard and it's a very steep learning curve for me. But I have asked repeatedly for more visibility to our budget and an Excel sheet. That's the way I'm used to getting it, with a line-by-line. And at one point, there was one released. I know that we, we put one on the school website, so I know that does exist somewhere. I don't necessarily think it's all-inclusive, but there is something there. I think it's got like 425 lines on it. And it was put up there as a PDF. But Julie, I echo what you're saying. I think that in future years, we can do better. I do think there's a need for more transparency. I do think there's a need for more Finance Committee meetings than have been had this year and in the past two years. I think I went back five or six years ago and there was 10 to 12 Finance Committee meetings. That feels a bit more realistic to me in terms of transparency and the Finance Committee having a good handle on what we're doing. This does not have to be done in a silo. Beth, there's a lot of work that goes into this and we've got a committee here, here to support you.
Anybody else? Okay. I'd like to say, we've done this for the last few years. We hired a superintendent to, in a business firm, to put these numbers in front of us. And you've been able to ask questions. And so, here we are. We'll just rethink how we're gonna do this for next year. And that's all I can say is we can do for right now. So, I would like to take a preliminary vote from the school committee to put this budget forward for Thursday. If anybody has any questions, I'd like a motion to approve this budget.
I make a motion to approve the budget for FY '26.
Sure.
Second.
Roll call vote. Nancy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
I'm going to abstain. I don't feel like I have enough information to make a vote in good conscience.
Okay. There's nobody else online, right? Okay. Carl?
Now, this is a vote of, of the entire school committee. It is not a vote...
Correct.
And this was discussed earlier, but this is not a recommendation by the Finance Subcommittee.
No.
This is a vote on either approving or, or not, or abstaining on the budget as it's been presented.
Correct.
And it's a preliminary vote, right? The official vote is Thursday.
Putting it forward to the school committee for Thursday.
Thursday. Yes. Bonnie?
Question. You didn't ask the discussion, but a question. What is the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee?
We didn't make one.
We didn't at all.
Sorry for speaking out of turn.
No, we didn't at all. Julie?
Abstain.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Arthur, yes.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Can you give us the totals on that?
62.
Thank you.
62 abstain.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Nancy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Arthur, yes. Thank you, everyone, for coming.